Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. Tonight Commissioner Turner will lead us in prayer and then Commissioner Jeff Phillips will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, thank you again, Lord, for the privilege to represent the citizens of Rutherford County. Lord, I ask that with each one of these decisions that are made tonight, Lord, that we do it with clarity and with a good conscience in the decisions that we're going to be voting on. Thank you for each one of those individuals that are represented here tonight, Lord, and their families. Bless them wherever they're at. Also ask that you continue, Lord, to watch over our troops overseas as they fight to protect us. We ask this in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please place me in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is.
Hey, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Here.
Twenty present.
Thank you. We have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes and I so move to approve.
Right, do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Farley, did anyone have any additions or corrections? There being none, all of you in favor of that, please then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have two resolutions of sympathy and we will call on Commissioner Black for a resolution of sympathy in regard to Mr. Jack Holbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will read a resolution of sympathy for Mr. Jack Holbrook. He was very well-liked and loved person out in the Last Casses communities, very well-known in Rutherford County. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Mr. Jack Holbrook, a friend of many, and whereas Mr. Holbrook is survived by his wife of fifty-three years, Peggy, sons Bobby and his wife Connie, David and his wife Melissa, and Jimmy, all of Last Casses, and two granddaughters, Ashley and Jennifer. And whereas Mr. Holbrook was a farmer and auctioneer and owner of Jack Holbrook Auction Services. And whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the sixteenth day of February two thousand and twelve does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Mr. Jack Holbrook. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Holbrook by the clerk of this legislative body. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Jordan and several others, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Black, for that. Now we'll call on Commissioner Cook to read a resolution of sympathy with respect to Mr. James Pitts.
Is there any of the Pitts family in the audience? This is a resolution of sympathy for James Pitts. I've known him for nineteen sixty-nine, before he ever got into this county, before I got into county. He used to work on my car and I learned a lot from him. I learned that it was a job keeping up a car, too. Whereas it is with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Mr. James Pitt, Jr., a friend of many, and whereas Mr. Pitts survived by his wife Mary, children Larry and his wife Marla of Murfreesboro, David and his wife Jennifer of Smyrna, Danny and Danny of Murfreesboro, and Pam Lynn and her husband Jerry of Murfreesboro, nine grandchildren and ten great-grandchildren. Whereas Mr. Pitts was a mechanic for rider truck rental for twenty-six years and for Rutherford County for sixteen years before his retirement. And whereas Mr. Pitts was a member of the Burnage Chapel Church of Christ in Antioch. And whereas we know that his passing was great, was a great cause of sadness to his family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at this regular session of the sixteenth day of February two thousand and twelve does hereby extend sincerely sympathy to the family of Mr. James Pitt, Jr. Be it therefore resolved that the copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Pitts by the clerk of this legislative body. Madam, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner P. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cook. Okay, there are no one that has signed up for public comments tonight. Therefore we'll go on into the elections and confirmations and Commissioner Gooch will handle those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Steering has several items for your consideration this evening. First, on your dash, you will see a list of notaries who wish to be elected and I so move for their election.
And a second, Commissioner Sereno, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Second, we need to confirm the reapportment, Mr. Graham Coats, to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority Board. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And finally, we need to fill a vacancy on the Industrial Development Board and Health, Education and Facilities Boards. Steering nominates Dr. Nate Schott.
And a second, Ms. Sandlin, Commissioner Baum.
I'd like to nominate, thank you, I'd like to nominate Bill Jones for the Industrial Development Board.
Have a nomination for Bill Jones.
Second.
Second from Ms. Cook and Ms. Ely.
I'd also like to make a motion to suspend the rules and give the candidates for the Industrial Development Board an opportunity to speak and tell us about their strengths and vision and experiences.
Second from, is that Commissioner Schaefer? All right, all in favor of suspending the rules and allow the two that have been nominated to speak, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let's see, since Mr. Schott was nominated first by the Steering Committee, we'll just let him speak first, if he would like to.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to close the nominations?
Well, there were no more nominations, no one rose to nominate, so I just assumed that was the end of it. All right, thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners and Constitutional Officers, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come up here. My name's Nate Schott and I live in District thirteen and I was applying for the position of Industrial Development Board. My qualifications really come from a background of that I have a love for Rutherford County. I'm a small business owner who also happens to have interest in other businesses. I've owned my own business for twenty years, been a practicing dentist here, but also owned other dental offices in the area of late. I've been involved with bringing a hospital to this town, Trust Point, which is the newest hospital that I'm a part-owner in that's going up on Thompson Lane. It has to do with rehabilitation services, psychiatric services and rehabilitation, which is going up here now and provide about two-hundred-plus jobs. Also I have a company, other company, that's an oral healthcare company that I have been involved with and started and do natural healthcare products for teeth and gums and things that apply to my business as well. But I think the question here tonight that I want to say is I don't think that you're going to find either of the two of us that are here that are going to be lacking in capability or ability or desire or motivation to serve Rutherford County. I think what we're differentiating ourselves on is perspective. And I think that perspective comes from somebody that comes from a background of healthcare, myself, or somebody that comes back from a background of banking. I think Mr. Jones is a fine man, he's done a lot of great things for Rutherford County. I think he is a visionary like myself who wants to see the best for Rutherford County. But I think tonight, as you think about who you're going to vote for and put on this board and support, I think you've got to look at whose perspective do you want to come from? You've already got bankers on there, you've already got people from Utility District, you've got other people that are in development and business, and I think you're talking about diversity and looking at what happens with somebody that's capable of doing a job and that wants to do a job and wants to serve Rutherford County and its constituents and people that we're all serve in many ways, me from a patient side of treating many people in Rutherford County, and I think you all from the elected position that you do. So I hope tonight, with that said, you just look at what I can bring to the table with perspective and from a healthcare background. Healthcare has a lot to do with what's happening in this county. It's got a lot of things happening in this part of the county and also in the north end of the county. There's so many things going on in the north end of the county. You've got things happening with education and you've got a lot of great things going on there as well. And what I know you all are so aware of with the diversity that's here, Rutherford County isn't just Murfreesboro. It's a lot bigger than that. And so I would appreciate your support, I'd appreciate your vote. But I do know this, whichever one of us gets the support, Rutherford County is going to win either way. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Jones may speak.
Mayor, Commissioners, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here and assure you that I will be brief. My name is Bill Jones and I want to thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Back in December, when I believe I was the first application turned in for this position, I did so because in my long series of works with Destination Rutherford, the Chamber of Commerce, and helping bring business and industry here, I know how important the Industrial Development Board is. You quickly learn that that is the key in many ways to our economic development and I'm interested in being a part of that. I'm basically from Murfreesboro on my application, I list my educational backgrounds, which is for you old timers, Mitchell Nielsen Elementary and Primary School, Central Middle School, Riverdale and MTSU, and then also list other civic and charitable and community interests that I have. Proud to have been past president of the MTSU Foundation, proud to have served on St. Thomas Health Services Investment Committee for their foundation, Chamber, work at the Chamber, Destination Rutherford Chairman, as well as being currently on the Board of Directors for Middle Tennessee Medical Center, as well as being a member of the hospital's Executive Committee as well. So again, love the community as does Dr. Schott. Dr. Schott's a fine man and he's correct that either one, I believe, would do a good job. I do think the difference is that I believe I'm the only applicant who submitted an application who can list specific economic development projects that they were involved with. I list a lot of them on my application, everything from, of course, the biggest ones, the Amazon deal here recently that can assure you Destination Rutherford played a significant role in, but you had, and over the last year's perfect equipment, it's a large expansion up in Laverne Warewells expansion, actually a move from Rutherford County into Smyrna, Pretoria, the Frankie operation in Smyrna, that's thirty-eight million dollar project with two-hundred-and-fifty jobs. So lots of opportunities to be involved in economic development. Since I turned my application in, Destination Rutherford and the Chamber, been fortunate to help and assist in bringing sacks, Fifth Avenue to a new project to Laverne. So anyway, lots of experience there, and I would like to speak about one briefly, one specific project that I think, I hope demonstrates my ability and certainly my commitment. The Embassy Suites Hotel and Conference Center is a project I'm very proud of. I was one of a small number of people who got on one of those little bit tiny airplanes in Smyrna and flew up to Springfield, Missouri bouncing along in the back of that thing to meet with the developer, Mr. Hammond's. When it appeared that that deal was dead, I was one of three people who got Mr. Hammond's to agree to fly into Smyrna, got John Black, let me bum a conference room for him, and we got in the conference room and we sat there till we got that deal worked out. I thought that was the end of it, get back and find out that you now have to have a referendum to approve that deal. Y'all are all politicians and have run campaigns and I'm sure you realize that running an election is bad enough, running a referendum for a project like that is very difficult. Frankly, nobody wanted to do it, thought we couldn't win. I volunteered to try my best to get that effort through and get it passed, and I'm proud to say that it did pass, and it passed with over sixty-two percent approval from the voters. And again, I know as y'all run your own elections, you know how difficult that is. That ultimately led to Mr. Hammond spending more than eighty million dollars in our community, provides over a hundred and fifty jobs. Not only does we have the jobs and a very desperately needed meeting facility, I'm not sure that you realize that last year, the Embassy Suites paid in property taxes seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars that came into our community to be used, four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand of that was to the county that you all could use as y'all see fit. So I think that's a specific concrete example of getting the job done and doing so in a way that brings a much-needed facility to Rutherford County and this one's financially important to the county. I wished I had time and I know to talk to you about the Amazon deal. I can assure you that that deal was touch and go up until the bitter end. And I know people kind of thought, well, once it kind of got announced it was going to be okay. Well, I can assure you that it wasn't okay, and if it wasn't for people getting in a room at the very end and just working it out, we might still be fighting that. So anyway, that's a hope, a sample of some of the projects I've worked on and I think speaks to my level of experience, expertise, and as I've told a couple of years, I talked to you, all I ask is that you consider those experiences and that expertise, and if you believe that those are qualities that make me the best qualified person for this position, I'd ask that you vote for me. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, I appreciate y'all's service to the community, and again, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, we have two gentlemen that have been nominated. Mr. Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a comment. Steering Committee almost brought all four applicants to you. We had a motion to come on the floor, very good motion, it just failed a lack of second. The professionalism, the business sense of these two guys, as they've said, and I was proud to hear both of you say it to one another, the county's not going to go wrong in putting either one of these guys on IDB, so we're going to be in good shape either way. But we had four applicants, top-notch, and man, I know y'all wish and we wish that we had this caliber of folks to apply to every board and committee that comes through here. But we almost sent you all four, but we felt like Steering Committee wasn't doing their job if we didn't send you one. We just sent you one. It would have been real easy to send you all four, and all four is more than credible and applicable and they can do the job. So we sent you Mr. Schott, but either one of these guys can do the job and we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sandlin. Okay, if there are no other comments, Madam Clerk, I would request that you call the roll, please, and you'll vote for one.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Well, I'd like to, being first in line, I guess, that must be a real honor. But I hope that whichever one doesn't receive the IDB will apply again in the future, because I agree with everything that's been said, that either one would be a great candidate. But after listening, I'm going to go with Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Black.
Mr. Schott.
Commissioner Jordan.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner P.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Cook.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Phillips.
Ms. Funt.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Schott.
Commissioner Turner.
Mr. Schott.
Commissioner Allen.
Mr. Jones.
Stevens.
Dr. Schott.
Commissioner Jordan.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Baum.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Coggan.
Dr. Schott.
Commissioner Young.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Phillips.
Young.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Uh, Dr. Schott.
Commissioner Ely.
Mr. Jones.
Gooch.
Dr. Schott.
Mr. Serenio.
Mr. Jones.
I have.
It was the report.
Dr. Schott, seven, Bill Jones, fourteen.
That being the case, Mr. Jones has received more than eleven votes, therefore he is selected as the next member of the Industrial Development Board. Thank both of you gentlemen for participating and being a great part of this county, and I'm sure you will continue to do that. Okay, we're ready to move on then. There is no unfinished business and we have no public hearings tonight, so we're moving right along here. Now we'll start the reports by standing committees, and you do have before you a monthly report from the Purchasing Committee, and we need a motion concerning its approval. Commissioner Cook, do we have a second? Mr. Schaefer, any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, Commissioner Jeff Jordan, your Health and Education Committee has requested a report from Dr. Burns, and I believe I do see him. Would you like to make a comment, please?
Yes, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you. One, small order of business, just so you can look at your schedules, and this is well in advance, but in April twenty-fourth, the night of the Health and Education Committee meeting, we're going to go down and look at, we're going to have this, first of all, at the Health Department in Smyrna, and we're going to go early at the suggestion of Mr. Phillips and the committee and take a look at Stewart's Creek High School. And I've talked with Mr. Clardy, and I just wanted to invite everyone to go, and I'll give you the time at the next meeting of the County Commission in March. That's April twenty-fourth I'm referring to. I asked Dr. Mark Burns, who is Chairman of the Rutherford County School Board, to join us this evening and bring us up to date on the search for a new Director of Schools, and he has kindly agreed to do this some weeks ago. And Dr. Burns, I appreciate you coming, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the rules and allow Dr. Burns to bring us up to date on the search for the new Director of Schools, please.
Second from Commissioner Turner and others, and all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much and welcome, Dr. Burns, and please come forward.
Well, good evening to Mayor and Commissioners. As Commissioner Jordan said, he asked me to come and brief you all on the status of our search for a new Director of Schools. First of all, let me assure you that all of us on the board recognize what an important decision this is. In fact, it's probably the most single, the single-most important decision we'll make on the school board, so we're taking this responsibility quite seriously and trying to go about it in a careful and deliberate manner. I thought what I would do is just sort of briefly outline how we got to where we are today and then what our plan is going forward, and once I do that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. As you probably know, late November, Mr. Gill submitted a letter to the board stating that he did not wish to be renewed, his contract set to expire on June thirtieth of two thousand and twelve. So in early Jan, the board had discussion about how it wanted to proceed, and we decided that we wanted to hear from some consultants who might help us with this search. So in early January, we had four consultants come before the board and discuss their companies, their services, their prices, just what they would do for the board. They're all impressive organizations with varying amounts of experience in this sort of a search. And what we decided was that the Tennessee School Boards Association, the professional organization that represents school boards, certainly had the most experience and seemed to have the most reasonably priced service, and so we hired them to serve as consultants on this search, mainly to help advertise, help collect applications, with the full understanding that they weren't going to be, you know, picking our new superintendent. That remains the sole province of the school board, so we made that clear to everyone who would listen to us from the very beginning. And of course, TSBA preaches that constantly, this is the board's decision, not TSBA, but they're professionals at this, and so we thought it would be wise to get them to help. So we made that decision in mid-January, we brought in Mr. Randall Bennett as the lead person from TSBA for this search, had a board meeting at which we discussed how we wanted to see the search proceed. Yesterday was actually a big day for the search. Several of you attended the lunchtime meeting that we had to gather input from community leaders. In addition to that, Mr. Bennett and his colleague from TSBA held four or five or six other meetings from various stakeholders, both in the system, and then last night at six-thirty, there was a community-wide forum held, all designed to gather input from the citizens. And so that day went very nicely, I think, and we did get a whole lot of opinions about what folks not only sees the strengths of our system, the accomplishments that we've made, but what are the challenges facing us and what would they like to see in a superintendent. So that's where we are. That was yesterday. Next Thursday, Mr. Bennett will return to a school board meeting, at which time he'll give us a summary or a report about what he found in these different meetings, which again included not only community leaders, but principals, teachers, clerical workers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, everybody we could think of to invite associated with the school system in addition to that community meeting last night. So next Thursday, he'll come and present that to us, and at that time, we will formally adopt the criteria for the search. That is, we'll formally decide how we want the ad to read and officially open the search. Now, it's not at all a secret around the state that we're hiring somebody, and there's been a good deal of interest expressed already, but the job has not officially been posted. We anticipate that will happen next Friday, the day after that meeting, or at the very latest, early the following week. And at that time, we'll start taking applications, which will go directly to TSBA in Nashville. We have set a deadline for applications of March fifteenth. Then TSBA will do what we think is going to be an important step. They will bring to us what, a small pool of candidates that they perceive as having the strongest records, being the strongest candidates, and they'll assemble a committee of folks to oversee and look at the applications and bring that to us. Now, at that point, we might adopt that and say, yes, we want this list to be our finalists, we might add people, we might delete people, but again, we thought it was important to get some full-time educational professionals to look at these applications and bring to us what they saw as the strongest candidate. So that will happen on March twenty-seventh. So it's a fairly compressed timeframe, you know, we're trying to move along in an expeditious manner. Our plan right now is to have interviews the week of April ninth, and right now, we anticipate having four or five interviews. So we, again, this is fluid, we could change this depending on what the pool looks like, but right now, we plan on interviewing four to five folks. That'll be Monday through Friday, every night at, I don't know if we set the time, but it'll be a consistent time, probably five, six o'clock, something like that. probably 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, something like that. We want the communities' involvement in that. They won't really get to ask questions, but we'd like to hear what they think about the candidates, and certainly, all of those will be open meetings, and I think we'll have a pretty good sense of who we're dealing with, both between those in-person interviews and the recommendations that TSBA gives us. After that, I'm not quite sure how it's going to go. It depends on what we think about the candidates. Possible, we might invite some back for a second interview. Possible, we might go visit the location where these folks are from. Can't really say specifically at this point how that's going to unfold, but we have some time between, that Friday would be the 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, be the 13th. Between April the 13th and over the next month, we anticipate making a decision. So, our goal is to have the new Director named by mid-May. Again, we're giving ourselves a little wiggle room there. Legally, because of a state law that says no contract can be entered into with a Superintendent or Director of Schools within 45 days of the School Board election, our actual deadline is June 15th. Between June 15th and 30 days after the August election, which I believe is on the 2nd, so between June 15th and Labor Day, we cannot enter into a contract with anyone or change a contract of a Director of Schools. So, we think we've given ourselves plenty of time to get this job done. We aim to be done by mid-May, and if something goes wrong, we have another month before we really have to have things done by mid-June. Depending on the availability of the person we pick, we'd like there to be a couple of weeks of overlap between Mr. Gill and the incoming person, just so that they can get the lay of the land, but again, can't guarantee now that'll happen. It'll depend on the schedule of whoever we pick. So, in a nutshell, that is it. That is our plan. So far, things are going well. It'll get interesting, more interesting once we get nominations or applications. One thing that Mr. Bennett and my fellow Board members have said, anybody is free to apply. If you have someone you think you'd like to apply, give us their name, and we'll have TSBA contact them. So, we want as many qualified folks to apply as possible, and we're going into it looking for the best person to lead this system. So, I don't think I have to convince any of you the importance of this job and what percentage of the county budget this person oversees, so we are fully aware of how important this decision is. With that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions or comments you might have.
Commissioner Farley has a question.
I've got a question. I tried to watch, you know, School Board meetings, so, you know, to kind of be updated on things, but I haven't seen, or if y'all have three to five applicants that are given to you all through Mr. Bennett.
Right.
And it, does the Board still have the capability of going beyond?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so your hands are not really tied to...
No, in fact, we can specify to him whatever number we want. Now, if he, in his judgment, or the committee's judgment, there weren't that many qualified people, he wouldn't bring them, but yes, we are very much free to go beyond that list. If there's somebody we want to interview who he does not bring forward, we'll interview him. So, and it's a good question, because several of the Board members were concerned about bringing on a consultant for that very reason, that maybe they'll try to narrow our list of choices, and we won't let that happen.
That's good to hear that.
Anyone else have a question or a comment? Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to publicly thank Dr. Burns and Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Allen and others that are on the Health and Ed Committee. Understand how privileged we are, that we've got such an outstanding School Board that's doing such a good job and a due diligence to, in this whole process. I think Dr. Rakes last night said that in his 52 years of educational service to students, this was the most efficient and the best qualified School Board that he's ever had the privilege of serving under. And I think, given the growth and given the times have changed in his tenure, that says a lot about how fortunate we are in Rutherford County to have a School Board that's been that efficient, and to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Farley's statement, and Dr. Burns helped me if I'm off here, but I believe there was even a two-year window there where the TSBA said they could, they would come back if we decide that this isn't working out, where they would waive that fee and be able to come back and assist us in that decision-making process. Again, obviously, we hope not to get there, but I just wanted to publicly thank Dr. Burns and everyone that's on the School Board for what they do for the citizens of Rutherford County, for the students in the school system.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. I do appreciate that, yes, TSB offers a two-year guarantee. If within the first two years, we decide we can't stand the new Director of Schools, or I guess if he or she can't stand us and leaves, they will conduct another search for us free of charge.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Burns. We appreciate your leadership on the Board there, and look forward to a very successful conclusion, we are sure. Commissioner Jordan, did you have any other comments you wished to make?
No, sir. We'll land cave, I think.
Thank you very much. Now, Commissioner Ely, we're ready for the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report.
Item K3A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Fund be amended as follows. From juvenile detention, unaside fund balance, $7,290, to maintenance agreements, $5,550, maintenance and repair of equipment, $1,740. Sheriff's Department and jail, from the Sheriff's Department, communications equipment, $1,500, to the jail, maintenance and repair of buildings, $1,500. Increased revenue from other direct federal revenue, $10,959. This is from the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant. Increased expenditures, maintenance and repair of buildings, $10,959. From the Sheriff's Department, overtime pay, $20,000, and the listed related benefits, also $20,000 from hazardous waste cleanup, going to the jail, overtime pay, $36,600, and the listed related benefits. From restricted for public safety, $47,975, and this is the litigation tax, to jail building improvements, $37,082, jail overtime pay, $9,055, and the related benefits. County Mayor Correctional Work Center, from the County Mayor and other charges, $12,888, going to the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center, other equipment, $12,888. Employee insurance from the various departments, from employee benefits, employee insurance, $47,355. This is a cleanup amendment, and this reflects employees' elections of insurance benefits after open enrollment and going into these departments. OIT, employee insurance, $1,555. County buildings, employee insurance, $3,135. Juvenile detention, $6,389. Risk management, $2,370. Youth services, $5,747. Human resources, $20,238. GIS, $5,298. Planning, $2,623. Resolved this 16th day of February 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Dernigan. Any discussions or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
Item K3B, Industrial Economic Development Fund Budget Amendment. Before I read this amendment, I'm just going to give you the background that was presented to budget. Rutherford County authorized a loan to Wary Housing for $1,279,297, for a term of 303 months, at an interest rate of 10%, with the first payment due January 1994, and the last payment due March 2019. On January 31, 2012, Wary Housing officials paid in full the principal amount owed to Rutherford County, $714,196.4. A portion of the original note included legal fees due to Cope, Hudson, Reed, and McCrery. The amendment reduces the amount budgeted for interest for the rest of the fiscal year and provides an appropriation to return the legal fees. That gives you a background now for the resolution for this amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Industrial Economic Development Fund be amended as follows, to recognize the payment in full of the loan to the Wary Housing Authority. Industrial development, decreased revenue from interest income, $26,298. Increased revenue, sale of property, $747,130. Increased expenditures for legal services, $21,516. Increased assigned for other operations, $699,316. Resolved this 16th day of February 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandin. Are there any questions? Commissioner Stevens?
Could you explain briefly again what the $21,516 in legal services is for?
There were legal services that had been incurred prior to the actual sale of this property, and those legal services were being amortized and paid to the firm, the legal firm, over this same period of time that we were getting paid. So, this is just the balance that was remaining, yet to be paid to the attorneys for their initial work. Other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please cast the votes. Please record your votes.
Okay, 21 yes. Motion passes.
Item K3C, Solid Waste Sanitation Fund Budget Amendments, and we have two from the Solid Waste Fund. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund be amended as follows. Employee insurance, various departments, and again, this is the same as we were doing for the General Fund earlier, after open enrollment. This reflects the employees' choices for insurance benefits. From assigned for public health and welfare, $10,620, to litter pickup, $1,780, convenience center, $2,240, landfill, $6,600. Miscellaneous, from assigned for public health and welfare, $10,000, to judgments, $10,000. Resolved this 16th day of February 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one yes. Motion passes.
Item K3D, a Highway Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Highway Fund be amended as follows. Capital Outlay, employee benefits, from capital outlay, highway equipment, $10,000, to employee benefits, unemployment compensation, $10,000. Resolved this 16th day of February 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sereno. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
Item K3E, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended according to the schedule, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. The First Amendment real allocates $25,867 in already budgeted classified pay and benefits. The $9,860 in account 72510-119 covers moving a federal projects accounting clerk entirely back to the general purpose school budget. She has been partially paid by the Title I Consolidated Administration funds, but with the cuts in the Title I allocation, needs to be moved back to the GPS budget. The other amendments are adjustments based on actual staff in place and vacancies. No new funds are being used. The second part of the amendment budgets an additional $202,148 in state funds. These funds reimburse the system for some of the cost we incur for our high-cost special education students. These funds must be budgeted for special ed expenditures and are being budgeted in staff and benefit lines that need to be increased because of these high-cost students. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Turner. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone who has not voted and would like to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, please do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one yes. Motion passes.
Item K3F, a Resolution Amending the Employee Health Plan Document Regarding Chiropractic Benefits. Whereas Rutherford County's health plan document currently provides a benefit for chiropractic services under Option 1 and Option 2, which includes 26 visits per calendar year, a maximum payment of $17.50 per visit, and a separate deductible of $150. And whereas the chiropractic benefit has not been adjusted in approximately 10 years, and whereas it is being proposed to amend Rutherford County's health plan document regarding the chiropractic benefit under Option 1 and Option 2, eliminating the $17.50 payment per visit, and providing an 80-20 benefit in-network, with an out-of-network benefit being 60-40, and whereas the chiropractic benefit would continue to provide 26 visits per calendar year and a separate deductible of $150. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County's health plan document be amended regarding chiropractic benefits under Option 1 and Option 2, to provide an 80-20 benefit in-network and 60-40 benefit out-of-network, to continue to provide 26 visits per calendar year and a separate chiropractic deductible of $150, with an effective date of January 1, 2012. Resolved this 16th day of February 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Pete. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone who has not voted and would like to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, please do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one yes. Motion passes.
Item K3G, a Resolution Renewing Contract with Cigna as the Third Party Administrator for Employee Medical, Dental, and Vision Plan. Whereas the Third Party Administration of the Rutherford County Employee Medical, Dental, Vision, Stop Loss, and Pharmacy Plan has been bid, and four complete bids were received with Cigna submitting the strongest proposal. Whereas the Cigna proposal provided a renewal of the Medical, Dental, Vision, Stop Loss, and Pharmacy Plan with a total annual cost of $1,610,840, which was a 42.3% decrease, an increase in the pharmacy rebate from $145,710 to $755,376, and a decrease in the annual ASO administration cost. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a renewal with Cigna for the Third Party Administration of the Rutherford County Employee Medical, Dental, Vision, Stop Loss, and Pharmacy Plan with a total annual cost of $1,610,840, effective July 1, 2012. Resolved this 16th day of February 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone who has not voted that would like to... Anyone who has not voted that would like to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, please do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K three H, a Resolution Authorizing Funding for the Expansion of Motlow State Community College. Whereas Motlow State Community College is proposing to construct a thirty-five thousand square-foot building on the campus located in Smyrna, Tennessee, for an estimated cost of ten million four hundred thousand dollars. And whereas the state of Tennessee has included the project on the capital's project list with funding of seven million six hundred thirteen thousand and seven hundred dollars. And whereas additional donations, including land donated by the town of Smyrna, totaled two million three hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, leaving the funding for the project short by three hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Whereas Motlow State Community College has requested contributions of two hundred thousand dollars each from Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from the reserve for capital projects, the development tax, as a contribution to Motlow State Community College for the construction of a thirty-five thousand square-foot building on the campus located in Smyrna, Tennessee, with one hundred thousand dollars being contributed in the current fiscal year and one hundred thousand dollars being contributed in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year. And additionally, that the General Fund be amended as follows. Other social, cultural, and recreation from restricted-for-capital projects, one hundred thousand dollars, to contributions, one hundred thousand dollars. Resolved this sixteenth day of February two thousand twelve. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo, and Commissioner Jordan, and others. Any discussion? Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Chairman, just to be on the safe side, I was going to publicly declare that my father is actually an employee of Motlow, and I've got a potential conflict of interest here, but I don't want that to be perceived, so I'm going to read the statement that I declared in my argument, and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Thank you, so noted. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone who has not voted and would like to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, please do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K three I, a Resolution Authorizing Agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health for the Support of Rutherford County Health Department. This is our annual agreement. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of health services toward the support of the Rutherford County Health Department in the amount of six hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars, with five hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred and seven dollars being direct local funds for which Rutherford County shall not be billed, and one hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars in appropriations for which Rutherford County shall be billed for the period of July one, two thousand eleven, through June thirty, two thousand twelve. Resolved this sixteenth day of February two thousand twelve. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandin. Commissioner McAdoo?
Just from my knowledge, I guess, how much did we give them last year, last budget year? Was it the same amount?
Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstaining, motion passes.
Item K three J, a Resolution Authorizing a Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Military Emergency Management Agency for the two thousand eleven Homeland Security Grant. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available funds in the amount of three hundred five thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars for the fiscal year two thousand eleven Homeland Security Grant Program for the provision of pass-through funding provided by the United States Department of Homeland Security. And whereas the grant is one hundred percent federally funded and is effective for the period beginning October one, two thousand eleven, and ending June thirty, two thousand fourteen. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the state of Tennessee, Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, to accept the two thousand eleven Homeland Security Grant in the amount of three hundred five thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this sixteenth day of February two thousand twelve. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K three K, Resolution Authorizing Grant Application for the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program. Whereas Rutherford County has learned of available grants, funds through the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, the SAFER Program. And whereas Rutherford County's fire chief desires to submit a grant application for a one hundred percent federally funded, two-year staffing grant for the purpose of hiring four full-time firefighters, twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week, at a pay grade five, with an annual salary between thirty-one thousand one hundred and forty dollars and thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, with Rutherford County not being required to commit beyond the two-year contract. And whereas Rutherford County's fire chief also desires to submit a grant application for a one hundred percent federally funded, four-year recruitment and retention grant for the purpose of hiring a recruitment and retention coordinator to help recruit and retain Rutherford County's volunteer force, with the pay grade and annual salary to be the same as the firefighters' positions listed above. Additionally, if awarded, the grant proceeds would also be used to provide four-year, long-term disability and life insurance policies for all volunteer firefighters. And whereas, if the grants are awarded, it is anticipated that the positions will not be filled until two thousand thirteen. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit a grant application for a two-year staffing grant for the purpose of hiring four full-time firefighters, and to submit a grant application for a four-year recruitment and retention grant for the purpose of hiring a recruitment and retention coordinator, and to provide four-year, long-term disability and life insurance policies for all volunteer firefighters through the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program with no local matching funds being required for either grant. Resolved this sixteenth day of February two thousand twelve. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Farley and Commissioner Jordan, but Commissioner Sandin, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, we said this in budget, that, actually, I think Commissioner Will Jordan mentioned it, that this is a two-year and a four-year, so, you know, if we're granted this, that's great, and it's well-needed, but in two years, we're going to pick up the tab, and four years on the coordinator, we'll pick up the tab. So you need to be aware of the free money now, it comes back later, that we have to budgetize these type issues. And it's a good opportunity for us, if we're awarded it, but on the back end, remember, this will be a budgetary issue that we'll have to pick up and fund ourselves.
You'll have to deal with it. You will not be absolutely required to fund them. It's not a part of the grant that you have to proceed with continuing those positions. But that will be a decision this body would have to make. Commissioner Farley?
That's understandable as well, but also, too, the insurance services organization, the ISO rating which all fire departments have in counties and cities, what this will also do, it will help to lower the insurance rating for our constituents out there. It could help with having four firefighters, firefighter on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to the apparatus. It could lower it possibly two to three points, which would save a local residence anywhere from the hundred to two hundred dollars a year on their insurance premiums. So there is an advantage and a savings as well through that mechanism as well, so just wanted to let that be known as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Young?
Well, I'm for this. I'm a firefighter. I've written several of these SAFER grants, and the SAFER grant the county has now, I wrote originally for the Rutherford Volunteer Fire Department. I'm totally for this. If we don't fund these positions in four years, and we do away with these employees, that's one option. The other options, you're going to have to have a fire tax for the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. Ain't no getting around it. When you add over a hundred thousand dollars of salaries and benefits to the budget we've already got now, you're going to have a fire tax for the unincorporated area of the county. So if you live inside the city of Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, or Egeville, your taxes won't go up. But we will have to have one. The Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association, I believe they're all for a fire tax, because they need more money. You're not talking a penny, maybe two pennies. Ms. Nolan probably give you better facts than I can, but you need to be aware of that. So four years from now, that you know what's going on. And it might be sooner than that. We might exceed the amount of SITUS tax money and hotel motel tax and hall income tax money that can only be legally used for the volunteer fire service, or for rural fire protection, because you can't use my taxpayer money from the city of Murfreesboro, or your taxpayer money from the city of Smyrna or Laverne, to pay for the volunteer fire departments. It has to come from the outside area, and that is the state law. Bedford County got sued by Shelbyville over this. So just be aware of that. In a couple of years, or four years down the road, it's going to be a tough issue, and people are going to get upset about it, but you got to follow the law. So once we exceed that area in budget, we're going to have to address that issue for the fire service. They have a cap. They can only, we can only give them so much before we have to implement a fire tax. And that came from Kevin Lowers, who's the CTAS fire consultant. He wrote a Tennessee Fire Handbook, and it's in there. When this county fire department was created a couple of years ago, that committee that did that, that was one of his things, is you're going to have to do this down the road. You can't get out of it. So I just want everybody aware of that, and I encourage you to vote for this, because we desperately need this in the county. We need somebody recruiting volunteer firefighters. The chief can't do it on his own. We also need, I don't think it's enough, I think we need more than four paid firefighters. When you look at Wilson County, and they got a full-time paid fire service, Bedford County's got a full-paid fire service, Williamson County's got basically the same place where we are with a county fire coordinator, fire chief-type position. We're behind. We got eighty-something thousand people in the rural county. We need it. We have, what, about eighty house fires a year in the county? That's a lot of fires. We need a full-time fire marshal, which we don't have in the county to look at, you know, do public education and plans review and inspections and investigations, which we don't have. But we need a lot of things in the volunteer fire service and for the rural counties, and I'm a city commissioner preaching for the county, for the unincorporated area, but just be aware of this and realize, it's going to be a tough, hard pill to swallow, but we got to do it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Young? Commissioner Jordan?
Well, I'm not ready to institute a new tax tonight, but Chief Farley did say any applications taken would be notified upfront. This was not a permanent job. So for me, this is a no-brainer tonight. Apply for this, if we get it, we get two years, that's great. We can decide at that point in time, those people be notified legally and every other way that we could let them go if we didn't decide to fund this that time. So I don't see any reason not to vote for this night, and we can always raise taxes in another couple of years.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussions? Excuse me, Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have great first responders in all of our emergency departments, so I would like to preface my comments with that. But my problem with this is, this is a local issue, and we're asking Washington DC to pay for our firefighters. And that just doesn't make sense to me. I do believe that we have needs here, and we need to find a way to take care of ourselves on those issues. We've got this addiction to other people's money, and so I'm going to vote no on this tonight. I just don't feel comfortable funding our local county employees through Washington DC. They're broke. If everybody takes SAFER grants all over the country, every county takes one, every municipality takes one, look at how much that adds to our national deficit. I mean, we're adding to that. Everybody's complaining about the out-of-control spending up in Washington DC, but if we take this grant, if we apply for it and get it and take it, we're adding to that. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Commissioner Pete?
Well, I hadn't planned on saying anything. I feel like this will pass, but last April fifteenth, I paid federal income tax money from Rutherford County to the federal government. I'd kind of like to get some of that back. I wish y'all would, too.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, three no, motion passes.
Item K three L, Form CT dash zero-two-five-three. This is a report on debt obligation, and you notice this is for information only. We will not need to take a vote. This is a report on our most recent bond issue. The state has revised the form that you have in front of you, and one of the requirements is that the details of our most recent bond issue be submitted to the governing body at a public hearing, and that is what I am doing, and I am going to defer to the mayor. He may want to speak to some of the details.
I want to say, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you that are now serving on this commission, and those even that went before you, and our elected officials, and our department heads, and especially our finance department. Under your prudent management and use of the dollars that you have been entrusted with, we have a tremendously good and high rating from the rating agencies, a double A, one, and a double A plus. Your prudent management of those funds have allowed us to have a very good rating, which allows us to borrow interest at a very, very good rate. And I want to commend you and thank Lisa Nolan in particular, and Sam Cruz with the Stevens Group. The timing at which we've done this could not have been more strategic in that we were able to issue those bonds on that particular day for two-point-four-two-four percent, which is, this is true interest cost on the twenty-year amortization. That's the lowest that the Stevens Group, I don't know if they've determined if there's ever been bonds by them issued lower than that amount of money. So I want to give you credit for that, and Lisa credit for that, and all of our elected officials and department heads over many, many years, building a very, very strong financial foundation for this county. You are to be commended. Just a few days after that, Knoxville has, within thirty days after we issued our debt, they issued debt that was equivalent to ours at two-point-six-four percent. So you can see that we were very, very fortunate in that respect. From the time that Lisa made this first projections on how many dollars this total project would cost us, which was last year, last fall, early fall, until now, what we're going to now be paying back on this seventy million dollars that we're borrowing is about seven million dollars less than the initial projection. So that's good, and that speaks well to your leadership and our finance director's leadership. So I just want to say thank you very much. Commissioner Farley? Commissioner Farley.
I can't go without saying this. It's funny, and also, Mayor, you're right, congratulate all those folks, but, you know, of all nights, for Dr. Todd not show up.
Let's see then. Thank you very much. Let's see, and thank you, Commissioner Ely, for a wonderful job every time, and thank the Budget Committee for their leadership in helping us through this difficult journey. We appreciate all that they have done over many, many years. All right, Property Management Committee has no report. Excuse me. Commissioner Cook would like to say something.
I would like to compliment Wary Housing. There's four of us on this committee, on this county commission, remembers when we told Wary Housing, "If you miss one payment, we are foreclosing." And so now, I want you to drive by there, I want all of you to go out there. It looks nice, and it was a dump when we said that. So I am very proud to see us collect money.
All right, thank you. It has been a good outcome. It's been a struggle for them, but it's turned out great. Let's see, Public Safety Committee, there is no report, so we're going to call on Commissioner Jernigan with respect to the Public Works and Planning Committee.
Hope the work of Planning Committee has three resolutions tonight. The first resolution is in support of fiscal year 2012 of Community Development Block Grant Application. Whereas funds are available through the State of Tennessee Small City Community Development Block Grant Program, and where Rutherford County wishes to assist and provide in a public sewer system to serve the residents of Egeville in Rutherford County, and whereas Rutherford County may apply for CDBG funds in the amount of $500,000, and the local match will be provided by the Department of Agriculture Rural Development Grant Loan Funds. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this application be made for CDBG funds to construct a new treatment facility and extend sewer lines to areas where public sewer is currently unavailable in the city of Egeville, Tennessee, and that the appropriate official for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County any documents required. Resolve this 16th day of February 2012. I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Tiffany Phillips. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of this, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Second resolution is approve a drainage easement for Greenwood Estates Lot 130 at 7451 in Tidham Lane. Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing Rutherford County Highway Commission and Supervisors to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easement requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit 1 are the easements recommended by the Planning Department, and whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department, and therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve as an additional public drainage easement, the attached list Exhibit 1 is submitted by the Planning Department in accordance with Tennessee Code Antedated 54-9103 and 54-904. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, should be the only public drainage easements which should be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this 16th day of February 2012. I so move.
All right. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
A resolution to forward a request to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the installation of a traffic light at the intersection of Central Valley Road and Highway 231 North. Resolution, whereas Highway 231 North in Rutherford County is a highly traveled state-maintained road, and whereas with the completion of Liberty Valley subdivision which exits onto Highway 231 North, this has put additional vehicles entering Highway 231 North, and where it is in the best interest and safety of the citizens of Rutherford County for the State of Tennessee to install traffic signalization at the Highway 231 North and Central Valley Road intersection. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to request the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation install traffic signalization at the Highway 231 North and Central Valley Road intersection. Be it further resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the county clerks send a copy of this resolution to the state legislative body of Rutherford County, Tennessee. Resolve this 16th day of February 2012. I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Jernigan.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allen.
Before we move off of planning, I just want to add one thing. Just because the Planning Department has not been up here giving reports as of late, it's not due to their lack of effort and work on their part, they just haven't many developments for us to look at, but I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes right now in rewriting our zoning ordinance. We are accepting information online, feedback online, there's a draft copy there. The planning staff will be more than happy to meet with any one of you, but I challenge each one of you to read the zoning ordinance, because it is going to have to become before this body, and we're going to have to vote on it, and so it's very long, it's very involved, and it's not something that you can get in a snippet or a paragraph, you know, from the newspaper. You're going to have to read it, you're going to have to look at it, you're going to have to figure out for yourselves if there are issues with it, concerns that you have, and so I just wanted to say that, because it's a long, drawn-out process, it takes a lot of time to do it, we'll be having lots of public hearings, it's very important that we, as a body, are intimately familiar with it before we vote on it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Coggan will give us the resolution from the Steering and Legislative and Governmental Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item on the agenda we need to approve, a consortium agreement. Whereas the attached consortium agreement by and between the chief elective officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Davidson, Wilson, and Trousedale Counties provides for the parties to be designated as a Local Workforce Investment Area, LWIA, to promote the effective delivery of job training services and provide policy guidance and oversight of activities under the job training program, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said consortium agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the consortium agreement with Davidson, Wilson, and Trousedale Counties. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County said consortium agreement. Resolve this 16th day of February 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Cook. Any questions? Commissioner Schaefer.
Could you just explain what the effective delivery of job training services means? And is there, what I'm getting at, is there a cost associated with?
There's no cost associated with this at all. This is simply an advisory group, a little board that's appointed to assist and work with the technology center with respect to developing their curriculum. Any other questions? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Is there any other business that comes before this body? Commissioner Pete.
I just wanted to invite everybody to come out to the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department this Saturday, the 18th, from 6:00 to 10:00 for Country Hand Breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you, and it is good. Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, Commissioner Sereno has already pledged $20 to the St. Baldricks Fund for getting my head shaved March the 16th, and he challenges all of you county commissioners to do the same or more. So, ain't that right, Commissioner? That's right. That's right. So I ask y'all to go to www.stbaldricks or www.baldintheborough, and go down to Commissioner Goes Bald, that's me and my team, and pledge some money. Right now, my son's upstairs, my daughter, too. He has got more money pledged than I do, so I'm losing big time. So y'all got to, y'all got to up the Andys here and get some money, and yeah, my daughter's helping, too, so I can't forget her. But we need your help for child cancer. It's going for a great cause. We need your help. Thanks.
Commissioner Farley.
I was watching the commission meeting the other night, and not planning commission, and Steve, I actually thought it was a toupee.
I just want to make sure I got this right. Now, we could donate to your son or daughter. Isn't that correct?
He could, but I wouldn't agree with him.
Well, I understand that, but I just wanted the body to know that we could do that.
Any other business that come before this body? Thank you very, very much, and have a good night.